Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've given to us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item agenda is approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Burke's.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
All in favor.
Item five, public hearings. We have none tonight. Item six, citizens comments.
Your honor, tonight.
None tonight. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions. Seeing none, we move to item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Police report, Chief Humphries. Welcome, sir.
Chief Humphries for the month of April. The year's staffing was consistent, 21. Over time, consistent one mile less than previous month. In training, went up just a little bit, 366 hours. Our police report, all volumes of missions down just a little bit, 70 percent. Calls for the month. In our activity, arrests were down from 131 to 95. Domestics were down. DUI stayed the same and our drug charges were down just a little bit. Theft about the same, just one less. Our citations went up just a little bit and I've got a note there. Eight of the citations were in the school zone. We are committed to trying to make those school zones as safe as possible. A ton of traffic moves through those in the morning, not just our kids going to school or parents dropping off, but a lot of commuter traffic, especially on 100. We started by warning tickets, I mean just warning, stopping people and warning them. We did post signage and now we've moved to enforcement. It's not just Fairview citizens moving through there, as we know Davidson County, Dixon and Hickman County people move through here and we are committed to trying to slow that down because distracted driving is a significant impact on motor vehicle accidents. So we are going to continue that effort. Traffic accidents for the month. We're 18, property damage up to 15 and three injuries and fortunate as with the last month's reported, no fatalities here in a while. And for our last slide, we had a public relations event on the 27th. We partnered with Fred's and Williamson County Anti-Drug Coalition. We conducted a drug tape back event where we collected 60 pounds of unused pharmaceutical drugs of which we stored in our evidence room and DEA comes in and logs that and destroys all that for us. We don't have to do any destruction, they take care of that for us. In addition, we had a certified car seat installers onsite. They help four citizens by inspecting, installing and educating them on proper seat installation. And just the citizens that do watch this, I want them to know that we have someone on every shift, some shifts too. So we're available if they need us to come to them or if they want to stop by PD and we will check those car seats for them, make sure they are installed properly. And no additional info for the month. Yeah. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you about the school zone.
Yes, sir.
So is that just during the hours of school operation or is that all the time?
It is. During the hours of school operation.
Okay.
It is in that area. After hours, it's ineffective, but as long as the school is in operation, that is effective law that there's no cell phone usage in that zone.
Okay. Have we seen a decline in utilization? I mean after the warnings and so forth?
Well, you know, really, as we move to deciding how we enforce that, we really didn't take a statistical data from before, so you don't know. As the months come, move forward, then we'll know whether we see that dip. But as the law went into place and we started to address that by stopping people and warning them, it was pretty significant. And not every day do we have the manpower as we're working the school zones to have the extra officers in there observing those violations and stopping. So that, you know, that's hit or miss. Whether we're fully staffed that day or we have someone off of vacation or training, it reduces that to our function of just traffic control at that point. But the days we do have officers there, we're addressing those issues and we'll see as the months come whether that takes hold and the citizens that move through here start to adhere to that and reduce their usage through those zones.
Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, chief. Fire report, Chief Hughes. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners? For the month of April, we had 86 emergency calls that we ran, down just a little bit, but nothing significant. The breakdown of the calls, still medical calls in nature, still led the way at about 73 percent. We did have three fires, nine motor vehicle accidents, and then the others are citizen assists, fire alarms, lost calls, things like that. Monthly training hours for the month of April, we had a total of 403 total hours. The breakdown, we had some facility training, which is just company training inside our facility, which are three-story buildings behind the station that we're required to do so many hours in every year. And then again, we have our, we had some driver training. Next month, we'll have a little bit more driver training. In June, we have the driving simulator come out from the State Fire Academy. They'll be onsite for about three days and take the entire department through their driving courses. And then, of course, our regular online training and EMS training. Again, I just want to remind all the residents, if you know somebody or if you're in need of smoke detectors, call us, we'll set up a time, we'll come out and install for them. Questions?
Yes, sir. Chief, you all implemented your new radio system now, that's up and going. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, and that affected some of our training hours this year. This month, we're usually up around 600 hours a month of training. This month, toward the end of the month, actually the 25th, was the day that the county rolled out the new radio system countywide for fire. PD was rolled out a little bit, couple of weeks before us. So we are on the system. All Williamson County is on it right now. We spent a lot of time getting things installed, getting trained on the radios and just making sure everybody's familiar with them. We haven't had any problems so far. Kind of went seamlessly, the switch over at 8:00 AM and we hadn't really looked back.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We will go to item nine, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Commissioner Lucas, second by Commissioner Burke's. Any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke's?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor.
Item 10, we have no old business. Item 11, new business. A, application for an on-premise beer permit for Nando's Burrito and Taco Shop Incorporated, 7008 City Center Way. Owners Jesse Smith and Martin Ortega.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lucas, second by Commissioner Dawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke's?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor.
11B, resolution 12-19, acceptance of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Collins and Mr. Covington?
Yes, mayor. As you and the remainder or the other commissioners are aware, we have been working for some time on a comprehensive plan. Last year, we contracted with Keith Covington, with Common Ground Design, to assist us with the development of that plan. That plan is complete. The process tonight, if it pleases the council, would be simply to accept the plan. Mr. Covington's here to make a presentation. Similars was made at the planning commission so everyone can understand where we are. If it's accepted by the city, then the next thing we will do is start the implementation plan of the comprehensive plan. That will take at least a few months, there's some work to do behind that. But we're very appreciative of all the participants from the community, from the board, from our staff, everyone who's been involved in that. It kind of exceeded our expectations early on, it did not slow down during the process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Covington, he has the presentation for you. And I apologize for the microphone system, I know it may be a bit difficult to hear. We've worked on this for the week, we've had our consultants out to try and get some work done on it, so I apologize, we're working to get it corrected. I know it's an inconvenience tonight, but there is an effort behind the scenes to get that repaired. So with that, Keith?
Speaking of microphone problems. See if I can do this. Well, it's great to be here. Hope everyone can hear me okay. I know y'all are probably sick of seeing me, but I am glad to be here, I'm excited to be here to give a much more abbreviated presentation of the Fairview Forward Comprehensive Plan that's before you tonight. This has been an awesome process, I think a great effort on behalf of the city of Fairview to plan out its future. And we're excited to have you all consider it. I'm going to kind of hit some of the high points of the plan. I know some of you have seen this before. For those of you who were at the plan presentation to the community, it will not be that detailed, so don't worry about that. But I do want to make sure that you all have a good understanding of kind of how the plan is laid out, the process that we went through to get there and how you can use the plan as you move forward. So this has been something that we've talked about since the beginning. For any of the folks that may be watching or that are here tonight that are unfamiliar with this process, this is a citywide comprehensive plan. So it is a very top-level plan and it covers a lot of issues for the community. It is a vision for the future of Fairview. It involves a lot of public input and you adopt it as a community to guide municipal decisions on a variety of issues. It could be the physical development, it could be economic development, transportation, parks and open space, so forth and so on. This is your guide. What it is not though, and this is very important, is it's not legally binding, this is not zoning, even though you'll hear or read in the comprehensive plan, things about land use and development character. This is not a legally binding thing. This is also not set in stone. It is a living document, it has a 20-year horizon, but it really should be revisited every five years. And that's really important to note because, you know, it is a plan and things change and so you need to keep that. But this is a guiding force for the future. Why do we embark upon this? Well, you know, a lot of communities do it. In some states around us, they're actually required to do it. But the main reason is, is that you want to get out ahead of what is inevitably going to be the change in a community. Communities are going to change. You all get to decide how much of that change you want to see, but Fairview is growing. There's been a 2.4 percent average annual rate of growth since 2010. You have increasing employment. You have surrounding communities that are growing that are impacting Fairview. And you have a lot of attractive community assets, from Buie to the school system to the updated recreation complex, good police, fire protection, great parks. These are things that people want to come and be a part of in this community, whether it's visiting or whether it's living here. So this is an opportunity for you to think about that change. This process has been taking place over about 10 months, so we're in that final phase. You know, we, you know, spent the good part of last year just kind of developing an understanding of Fairview in this place. And then we got set to work on planning alongside the community. And then we refined all of that information into the plan, the final plan that's up for adoption. And this implementation piece is really just the beginning of implementation. Tonight is about adopting the plan and as Scott was saying earlier in the work session, the real work really then begins on how you implement different aspects of it over time. As I mentioned, a comprehensive plan has to be rooted in public input and we had great participation and turnout for this. We really weren't sure what to expect with this. And we started by trying to increase our outreach. We, you know, went to community events, we established a web presence, we used social media, we used flyers. Thank you to the staff here that put up flyers in so many businesses around the community. This, we also did press releases too. This got the word out and, you know, like Scott and I were talking, we didn't know what to expect and at that first visioning session last summer, we had over 100 people in attendance. And that is something that you should be proud of. It really was a great turnout and everyone was enthusiastic, engaged. At that meeting, we kind of presented some existing conditions assessment and then we spent the majority of the time in an interactive exercise trying to help, let the community help us develop a vision of the, for the future of Fairview. And we also used an online survey. A couple of months after that, we came back and did a workshop and it was a different kind of workshop. The workshops and all of the exercises that we went through were intended to build upon each other. So the first thing that we did was actually do a presentation and we had, you know, the results of the previous workshop, the visioning exercise, we talked about that and we got, the community got the opportunity to provide input on that. And then we went into a kind of a physical planning workshop where we looked at the physical development of the area, which involved land use, development character, mobility, community facilities and so forth. And that was a mapping exercise, that was a lot of fun and we had great input out of that. Then, as a team, we huddled back and developed the plan and then came back just recently in March and presented the draft plan in an open house format. Again, we had great attendance. We gave a presentation hitting a lot of the details of the plan. And then we had the plan, a lot of the boards up around the room so that people could get up close, review, ask questions, make comments. We took those comments and the comments from staff and the steering committee, which was hugely important in this process, and we revised everything and created that draft plan. We posted on the website on March 22nd. The planning commission adopted it on April 9th. So switching real quick to kind of talk to you about the plan overview, I want to just briefly talk about the structure of it. The way that the plan is built is it's intended, it is a long document in terms of just the number of pages, but it is more about kind of concise, more targeted recommendations as opposed to a lot of narrative. We do have an introduction and some background information that talks a little bit about kind of what led us to the point of making those recommendations. But the majority of the document is the plan itself and it's broken out into all of those bullets that you see there. It starts with the vision statement and the overarching goals. And then there is a framework plan and I'll talk a little bit about each of these. And then there are different elements that there are specific recommendations for each. Economic development, land use and development character, transportation, mobility, community facilities, historic and cultural resources, utilities and infrastructure. And then probably most importantly is an implementation section at the end where there is, all of those recommendations are in a matrix and they have a timeframe associated with them, they have potential responsible parties, potential funding sources, and that really becomes your checklist as a community to kind of go through and say, hey, how are we doing? And you should do that every year, by the way. Vision statement, I'm not going to read this, it is rather long, but there was a lot of things that people had to say about the city of Fairview, all good, that they wanted to incorporate. But I just want to hit some high points. You know, there was a recognition throughout this process that this is a rural community that cherishes its small-town character. But there was also a realization that growth is going to come and so the idea was how do we manage that growth in the way that preserves that character? And also, there is a number of other things that they want, that the community wants to make sure that they address. You know, promoting their heritage, leveraging their location within the region, encouraging a diverse economy, making sure that the community is well-connected and that we're also sensitive to the natural features and environment and adequately served. Beyond that vision statement, each of those different elements has an overarching goal. And you can read about those if you haven't already, you can read about those in the plan itself, but there's an overarching goal that goes with each of those. And then there is a framework plan. Now, the framework plan is important, so this is a map, obviously, of your city and the urban growth boundary. And what this framework plan does is it actually overlays kind of all of the ideas from those different elements that are physical in character or physical in nature and overlays them on top of each other. And this is something that's important to do because you don't want to think about parks and open space without thinking about transportation. You don't want to think about land use without thinking about community facilities. So all of those things are kind of overlaid and that became sort of the guiding diagram. But then each of the elements are pulled apart in the plan itself. So in terms of economic development, some of the key objectives is, number one, you know, recruit and retain the targeted businesses for which you have this best competitive advantage for. You want to define and enable business park locations. Overwhelming thing that we heard throughout this process was creating a true heart or downtown or mixed-use town center that is the heart of Fairview. It's actually something that has been a dream of a lot of folks in the community for years and we've tried to outline some ways from an economic development perspective as to how you can maybe get that done. You also want to collaborate with the partners around you, whether that be county, state and other municipalities, so that you can together market and package the community. And probably in the future, you definitely want to consider an economic development position or at least hire a consultant that does economic development so that you have someone that can lead that charge. You can't put that all on the back of the board, you can't put it all on the back of the city manager, you need that kind of person or persons to help you with that. Just a few notes here about some of your opportunities as a community. You are well-positioned from a light manufacturing standpoint, in fact, that's one of the rising areas of job growth in this area. Technical testing, R and D, which are associated with that, construction, you are at the nexus of I-40 and I-840, so warehousing and distribution, accommodation and food service and higher value retail are all potential opportunities. And you have an opportunity to maybe dig deeper into that in future studies. From a transportation and a mobility standpoint, you know, some of the key things are to reduce congestion, improve local streets, provide for alternative modes of transportation. And the way that you really can do that is to make sure that you're not funneling everything into one street. Fairview Boulevard is a great street, it can be much better. And when you have alternative modes of transportation and you have alternative routes to get you between 96 and Fairview Boulevard and other parts of the community, that is something that we heard loud and clear and we wanted to build that into the plan. So those streets that might help to alleviate some of that are identified as higher priority streets on the map. And you can utilize this map when you're considering upgrades to some of these streets and help, and use it to help prioritize your decisions. So you can see that there's a map in there and that identifies those priorities. And it's also not just cars, we're talking about moving people here, so we're thinking about bicyclists, we're also thinking about pedestrians and so forth. There's also design guidance in the transportation and mobility section because we understand that not every road is the same. Not every road is going to have sidewalks, not every road is going to be a rural road. And so you want to have different design guidance for different contexts. And so you can see that throughout the document, there's guidance that can help when you make updates to regulations and so forth as you go forward implementing this plan. From a community facility standpoint, I mean, you know, Buie Nature Park is your most cherished asset. You know, it received so much attention in terms of what it could be and what it is. So, you know, you want to continue to preserve and enhance that. There's a plan that has been done that can really help in that regard, so you need to continue to just implement that plan. But you have other opportunities too. Veterans Memorial Park, History Village. You have the opportunity to create a civic square within the town center that is envisioned for the community. Greenway System. You, you know, this is a citywide plan, so you might not necessarily be able to have, you might not have a whole lot of influence on the county facilities and the counties between the schools, the rec center and so forth. But we've identified some of the things that we heard from the community in there, so you need to share this with the county. And then, of course, support your first responders as much as possible. And there's a map that kind of shows not only the community facilities, this wasn't as much about finding new facilities, it was about enhancing the ones you have and making sure that they're well-connected. You have a lot of great historic and cultural resources in this community. You know, for those of you who maybe don't know, this whole area was made up of a lot of small kind of crossroads areas that kind of became a larger community over time. And each of those places has a story to tell. Obviously, just like it's a key public space asset, Buie Nature Park also serves as a cultural resource as well. And continuing to expand that outreach and footprint is important. You can use History Village, which is also a park, as an educational tool. It's very, it's close to the schools, you have opportunities to do that. A lot of folks saw portions of old, what they called old Fairview, some of the older buildings. They might not be in the greatest shape right now, but they recognize them as opportunities to adaptively reuse as opposed to just tearing down. So there's opportunities to preserve some of that roadside character that was there. And then encouraging the conservation of rural land, Williamson County is a great example of how the trust for public land, the Land Trust of Tennessee has been able to use conservation easements and so forth. That is certainly a tool that needs to be considered for Fairview. And we even heard overwhelmingly the idea of promoting the arts in the community. Now, that may be a little bit farther off for the city, but we definitely wanted to acknowledge that and give some examples of other smaller communities that actually do promote the visual and performing arts. From a utilities and infrastructure standpoint, I think we all know some of the challenges that Fairview faces in this regard, but definitely things are moving in the right directions. With this plan, you want to make sure that the utilities, that the local utilities understand your vision for the future of Fairview and make sure that it aligns with the current and future capacity that these utilities have. We know that we're pretty good from an electrical standpoint, we know that we're pretty good from a water supply standpoint, we know that we're good from a natural gas standpoint. Where we always fall short is in the sewer issue. But there are things that can be done and are underway to improve that and over time, I think that that's going to be even better. And of course, we know that there's stormwater management issues too, which are already being considered in the roadway report that's being done separately out of this process to how to improve that as well. So we wanted to acknowledge that. The last thing that I want to chat with you about is land use and development character. It's the, one of the larger portions of it because there are so many different aspects to the community. But the key thing here is, and this is a trend nationwide in comprehensive planning and neighborhood planning, and that is that communities don't want to think in terms of just commercial uses or residential uses anymore. They want to think about the character of community and what that means. And so we've developed a policy for this community based on character areas. So you have open space, settlements or neighborhoods which are primarily residential, centers, corridors, and of course your interchanges. And then we provide some guidance on development character. So this is the future land use character map. It's the most colorful of all the maps, but it is the land use and character policy for the future. This is what guides decisions on subdivisions and rezonings and so forth. And if we, you know, focus on open space, and in this case, we're talking more about public open space, but we also identify ways that you can protect environmentally sensitive areas through both, you know, clustering if you are having development, but also enforcing your environmental performance. your environmental performance regulations that are on the books. The neighborhoods and settlements is probably the largest swath of colors that you see in here, and it ranges everything from, you know, rural, which would relate to kind of what you have ag zoning now, all the way up to residential high. And I think the important thing to talk about here is the fact that, you know, there is a large swath of the area that's considered, that is intended to be rural in the future. There is also areas near the interstates where the community decided that's where higher-density residential, new higher-density residential should be located in the future. But then there's this area in between, which we call the, kind of that bright yellow, the legacy neighborhoods. Those are a lot of the existing neighborhoods that the community wanted to see the same, and then new neighborhoods where the density might be similar to what's there, to what, to the existing neighborhoods. But the community wanted to see other alternative forms of development that were permitted, whether that be development that conserves a large amount of open space and clusters development together, or traditional neighborhood developments like West Haven, Out 96 and Franklin and so forth. So we've built that kind of policy in there and given guidance for how you can update your regulations to address that. Centers. Centers are your, you know, commercial nodes. In some instances, they may even include some residential. You've got three basic types of centers. More rural ones that we call crossroad centers, and there's really only one, and it's in the urban growth boundary. Commercial centers, which are sort of more, a little bit more suburban, but are, the idea is to incentivize or encourage mixed use, but really limit the footprint of buildings and not let them get too large. And then town center, that is the thing that was, as I mentioned, was something that came through in this process loud and clear, that the idea that we needed to create or work towards creating a town center. And like I said, this was something that is an old idea, but it did not really kind of happen in the way that it should. And so what we did was we actually looked at three different locations for a potential town center. This one is just east of the 96 intersection with Fairview Boulevard. And again, these are not master plans, they were just there to kind of illustrate how you might develop a mixed-use town center in that area. And in this particular case, you know, we were trying to keep the building that had First District Coffee, which unfortunately is no longer there, but the building is, and then a post office. So that was one location. Another location was right around Cox Pike and Old Nashville Highway and of course, Fairview Boulevard. This area was looked at because it was kind of one of those historic nodes that has been part of the community for years. And then the third location, and what turned out to be the preferred location, maybe not to the surprise of a lot of people, was right in this area here. So if you look at the bottom of that map, you can see where the Publix is, the town hall that we're in right now is also just north of that. So this is a bit north of where the original town center was intended to be, but it is, was the preferred location, I think because of its proximity to Town Hall and Chester and so forth. And it also is a large swath of land that has limited ownership. So that was an important thing that I think the community drove home on that one. And again, you know, it may not develop exactly like this, but we have outlined in the plan ways that you can start to move that going forward. So that was an important part where we had the community give us their direct input. The corridors, you know, we could look at this and say, well, it's just a commercial corridor. But what we found and what the community identified was that this is not one-size-fits-all. There are commercial areas along the corridor, there are areas that need to transition in terms of transitioning into those commercial areas. And then there are rural areas that need to be maintained as rural as long as possible in the future to create the great gateways into the community that we have. And then, I believe, lastly, the interchanges. These were the areas that were identified by the community as areas where if we have additional industrial development, they need to be kind of situated near the interchanges where they have good access. If we have larger footprint commercial like big boxes, they need to be located in the areas there. Now, of course, the area around 840 is not currently served by sewer, so you're really limited there. But the area around 40 and 96 has the opportunity, and with the upgrades that are currently underway with the sewer plant, the, there is the opportunity to actually redevelop that area in a great way that really is a good for the community and good for the corridor as well. But that is where the primary larger-scale commercial was intended to go. So some of the ways that you can use this plan, obviously to guide regulatory updates, regulations are updated all the time, your zoning ordinance, and we identify this in the plan, needs some tweaks here and there, the subdivision regulations, too. Your design standards are a bit outdated, they need to be updated. But you can use this plan to help guide the efforts to make those changes. And as I said before, you know, this should be a guide on decisions about development, whether it's a zone change request, does this align with the plan? Or is it a capital improvement plan that we're looking? Is this a priority road that we need to be upgrading? And then finally, you know, just promoting change where you want it and preserving the areas where you don't want change. And that's important, you know? Focus on the town center, that's something that has come through a lot. Focus on the interchanges in terms of new development. And then, you know, it doesn't hurt to consider how to, you know, maintain those rural areas in the future. So, how to get it done? Adopt it. I hope that you will do it tonight and take this forward, but I think you need to understand that it cannot implement itself. It is merely a plan, and it will sit on a shelf and it will collect dust if the community does not find champions and put them to work at making this happen. And also with the understanding that it's not going to happen overnight. You can use that implementation matrix as a checklist, as I said, and, you know, you need to celebrate every win. Some communities will have a town hall every year where they come out and they say, hey, here's what we've done this year. Or just send out a small report that says, look, look at what we're doing, checking off the list. And like I said at the very beginning, revisit it often, it's not set in stone. The last thing that I want to say, and I will, I promise you, you won't hear me anymore tonight unless you have questions that I need to answer. Since the draft plan was presented, I just want to point out some of the things that changed for the Publix benefit. The preferred location for the town center was established, we identified that and put that into the plan. We made a few land use policy changes based on feedback that we got at the draft plan presentation and also afterwards through the website. And then we made a few community facility changes. We removed a potential greenway extension north of Horn Tavern along Brush Creek that was going into an area that was not seen as ever going to be in the city of Fairview. And then also, there was a recommendation to make sure that if we have bike facilities along Fairview Boulevard in the future, that they extend, extend all the way to 96 West into Franklin where the bike picks up now. So we wanted to just mention that there were changes that happened as we did that. So with that, I tried to be as quick as possible, and I will be happy to answer any questions if you have them, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Keith. Questions for Mr. Covington?
Okay. Good enough? It was that good, huh?
Well, let me throw a question in then.
Okay.
So Keith, how many hours does Common Ground have into this plan? Is it kind of monumental task? From beginning to end, how many months did it take?
It was a 10-month process.
10 months?
Hundreds and hundreds of hours. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but there were probably a lot of hours that, you know, kind of were just sort of hidden and chalked up to making a good plan. You know, one of the challenges was that Williamson County does not have good mapping data for Fairview. And so we kind of had to create a lot of the maps ourselves, you know? So that was, that was one of the things that we kind of first learned in this process that, you know, a lot of communities just don't have the resources, but you have those things now. So now you can take them and do them. But yeah, hundreds of hours and a lot of work trying to get the word out and get community involvement and everything like that, so.
And the citizens had how many, how many meetings did we have for the citizens to come?
We had, we had the kickoff, we had the visioning, the kickoff visioning session, we had the planning workshop with the draft plan presentation. So there are three big events for that. But we also collected input in a variety of other ways. I mean, we responded to people that reached out to us through the website because we would post everything up there. We did a survey at the beginning on the website. We had good response from that for people who couldn't come to the visioning session. We also visited the farmer's market one morning, got to talk to some people about the project. And then, of course, we were at the July 4th event last year and had a pop-up here. That's kind of where it all started. So, so yeah, it was a lot of input. And then, of course, thank you to the advisory committee, which two of them are now on the council. But Scott McCoy, oh my gosh, Rod and Mayor Blade, and why am I drawing blanks?
Rusty Ferris.
Rusty, yes, Rusty. Gosh, I'm sorry. Yes, that we met with you guys all throughout the process as well, and you guys gave us great feedback and input. So it's, it really has been a collaborative effort.
Great, thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, the only other matter would be whether or not the Board wants to consider the acceptance of the plan as presented to you tonight.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to accept.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, seconded by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
Item 11C, Resolution 13-19, cancellation of the July 4th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. I believe we discussed this in the workshop. Because City Hall is closed on the 4th, we would move our meeting to the 11th. Workshop at 6:00 and meeting at 7:00.
Yes, sir, that is correct. That's House-Ridden.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Dawson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
Item D, Resolution 14-19, establish sidewalk fund.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Dawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. 11E, Ordinance 2019-09, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting an amended budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Commissioner Lucas, seconded by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11F, Ordinance 2019-10, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote please, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12, Communication from Mayors and Commissioners. Commissioner Burks?
I apologize that we're having some audio/video issues. And if you did tune into this meeting, or if you do so on YouTube, and are unable to hear the presentation for the comprehensive plan, if you will look to April's Planning Commission meeting, the same presentation was provided to us at that meeting, and the video should be better on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
No comment tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins?
Mayor, before you adjourn, may I add just a couple of quick? I know you may have business, so I don't want to interrupt your...
No, sir, I have nothing. You have the floor, sir.
Just a couple of quick things, just some announcements to make, just quickly. Number one, the week of May 13, we will be working on the ADA accessible trail to the outdoor classroom at Bowie Park. We've rented some equipment, we have our engineers coming back in, so if anyone sees any activity around the trail between the nature center and the outdoor classroom during that week, again, that would be the week of the 13th, that's what we're doing out there. We expect that project to take about a week to be completed, and we'll give notice as soon as that's opened up and done. We don't expect it to be closed, but there will be some construction activity during that, on that trail during that week. Next, the sidewalk repair project on Highway 100 is complete. If anyone notices any other sections that need to be repaired, please let us know, but all the ones that we had identified earlier in the year, we have completed. We hope that that will be the end of those. We know there's some infrastructure adjacent to the sidewalks that are some problem, but that's sort of out of our control, but we do have the sidewalks repaired. The chipper service is back up and running operationally. We run it each day in April. It was a little heavy each day, but that's to be expected, it's the first of the year. I also want to let everyone know that we are still issuing upon request the leaf bags. We have gotten some questions about the ability to still bag leaves and do those things, so we will pick up those leaf bags if anyone comes by and to pick them up on the same day as we run the chipper out. So if you see those out there, that's what that is. We want to make sure we get those picked up. The flagpoles and the signage are all installed at the Veterans Lake Park or Veterans Memorial Park. If anyone gets a chance to go out there and take a look, the sign looks really well, looks really good. We hope to have the flags installed next week, and we'll start some landscaping around there to make sure that's done. But that's, that's all substantially done. The, there was some mention of the sewer system during the comprehensive plan presentation. Just to report back to the Board of Commissioners that the Water and Sewer Advisory Panel that was approved a couple of meetings ago did already have its first meeting with the Dixon Water Authority. We did that last week. We met with their senior staff. They have, their next board meeting comes up a week from Monday, and we will have a representative from the Water and Sewer Advisory Panel attend that meeting as well. We're going to engage them as much as we can. The plan, as you're aware, through the resolution that you passed, was for that panel to bring back to you a list of suggestions or opportunities that we could use to enhance our sewer system or partnership with the Water Authority of Dixon County. We're supposed to have that back to you in January, and I have no doubt we will have that to you in advance. A quick thank you to Keith Covington, everyone who's involved in the comprehensive plan. When we started talking this plan about a year ago, it was a bit overwhelming, just the fact that there was a lot of work to do. Now that we've accepted the plan, there's a lot more work to do. But it could not have taken place without the participation of the community. Those meetings were really well-attended. We learned a lot from them. I know I did, not being such a longtime resident here, but Keith and his staff did a really good job, and I think if we put this thing together the right way, 20 years from now, we're going to recognize the work that was done over the last 12 months. The budget, I also want to thank you for your help participation on the budget. We'll finalize the small details that we talked earlier tonight, get that budget posted on the website in the ordinance form. There is a public hearing that will take place at the next meeting, so if there are any questions regarding that, we'll put that up and follow up there. One other thing, the Focus on Fairview event that we're looking to do, we'll address the budgets on that as well, just as a reminder. That's the general update for what the city is doing with its resources, how it's functioning today and long-term. There'll be two events, so there'll be the same presentation, but that will be Thursday, May 23 at 6:00 p.m. in this room. We'll make the first presentation of that, and then we'll have a follow-up presentation on Saturday, June 10, um, June 8, where we'll go through. That will start at 8:30 a.m., and the purpose is to give anyone who has any question about how the city operates, every opportunity, in this case, two opportunities. opportunity, in this case, two opportunities, to come see those presentations, learn that information, and follow up. And lastly, we are aware of the questions or concerns about the striping on City Center Way between Publix, Hardee's, and MapCo. I would like to thank all those who've posted on social media, all their encouraging comments and warm condolences for us slightly missing that. We did just miss it. There was some miscommunication regarding the colored stripe, to be on what side of the road is a part of that. They simply got the white stripe and the yellow stripe reversed. I think they were just looking at it from two different angles. That said, we're aware of it. We've already gotten with the contractor to make the repair. We'll black those out and get that stuff done. So again, it's a simple oversight. We'll get that corrected. But if there's anyone who has a question about it, we recognize it, and we'll move forward to get that addressed. So thank you for your time. I just want to give those updates.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.